Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Counsel Audit Committee to order. It's Monday, September 30th, 2019. Welcome to those in the audience and those watching at home. And I want to give a special welcome to our Internal Audit Manager, Shawna Nelson. She's been in here in her new role, full-time since June. This is her first Audit Committee meeting, and we're thrilled to have her. And I can personally attest to the excellent work that she has been doing and all of the initiatives she's been working on, and I think you're going to be very happy with what you see. First, we'll move to Item 2A, Approval of Minutes of Monday, April 22nd, 2019. Could I get a motion to approve those minutes?
I so move.
Second? Do you want to get a second?
Second.
Thank you. That is moved by Counselor Sale and seconded by Tony. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next is Item 3, Reports and Updates. The first item is Item 3A, Audit Report 1803 Purchasing Card Program. This was performed by our internal auditor, Abby Vandolinati. And Abby, I'm going to let you take it away.
Thank you, Counselor. Good afternoon, Abby Vandolinati, Internal Auditor, presenting the Purchasing Card Audit Report. The purpose of the purchasing card audit was to review the purchasing card process and current procedures to ensure internal controls are in place and functioning, and that the program is operating in accordance with leading business practices. The audit focuses on purchasing card transactions, purchasing card transaction limits, and purchasing card program controls. Please note, this audit did not include a review of travel card expenditures, as this particular area will be addressed in a separate audit in the future. The city's purchasing card program was implemented for small-dollar purchases as a cost-effective, simplified, and efficient alternative to the city's existing purchase requisition and purchase order process. The current purchasing card cycle is on Page 3 of the report, in the graphic near the top of the page. The purchasing card program offers cost savings to the city and time savings to employees by reducing the amount of paperwork, as well as administrative costs. Additional benefits include the ability to set and control limits on cards, control purchases to specific merchant categories, and rebates received from the bank. The rebate information is found on Page 2 of the report, on the table in the middle of the page. From July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, the city spent approximately $5,661,822 through approximately $12,600 purchasing card transactions. The city has received approximately $360,490 back in rebates from the bank. As stated, the rebate information is found on the table on Page 2 of the report. The purchasing cards are broken down by department, showing the number of cards, number of transactions, and transaction total in the table. That's on Pages 3 and 4 of the report. The objectives of this audit were, 1, to determine if purchasing card transactions are appropriate and in compliance with city policy and procedure; 2, determine if city purchasing card program controls adequately mitigate risk; and 3, determine whether the city's purchasing card program is operating effectively in accordance with leading business practices, and that cardholders have purchasing limits in accordance with actual purchasing activity. The scope of this audit included a review of purchasing card policies and procedures, system access, and program controls as they are currently in place. The detailed testing of transactions covered the 12-month period of July 1st, 2017, through June 30th of 2018. Our audit work is listed on Pages 4 and 5 of the report. Regarding findings for this audit, finding number 1, which is found on Page 6 of your report, we found that cardholder training provided by the purchasing department is inconsistent. We were unable to obtain all sign-in sheets to verify that all initial and ongoing trainings occurred. And as stated in the Purchasing Card Program Guide, prior to releasing the card, the cardholder will be required to attend a training session conducted by the program administrator. In addition, the Government Finance Officers Association, abbreviated GFOA, recommends initial and ongoing training of cardholders and supervisors as a leading practice for governmental purchasing card programs. Our recommendation for this finding is that both initial and ongoing training should be provided consistently to all cardholders who are issued a City of Sioux Falls purchasing card in their name. Training should be documented and filed as proof the cardholders attended required training. Our second audit finding, we found that two individuals who have access to credit card allocations in the financial software system, who also have a City of Sioux Falls purchasing card in their name, are allocating their own purchasing card transactions. Our recommendation to address this finding is that management should ensure proper segregation of duties exists by ensuring those employees who have both purchasing ability with a city purchasing card, as well as reallocation access in the financial system, do not reallocate their own purchases. Our third and final finding is that the city's purchasing card program guide does not include any direction regarding the requirements for an increased spending limit on an employee's purchasing card, should a legitimate business need arise. Our recommendation to address this finding is that management should develop and document in written policy and procedure, a written process for requests for higher spending limits for all City of Sioux Falls purchasing cards. Management has responded to all of our recommendations on Pages 7 and 8 of the audit report. Management's response regarding recommendation number 1, regarding initial and ongoing training, management agrees and will utilize a target solutions, a train and tracking software, to develop a training program for cardholders once the software is purchased. In the meantime, the city will relocate the train records into a centralized electronic file to track the cardholder training. Scott Rust, purchasing manager, responded, and the date of expected implementation was July 31st, 2019 for the electronic file, and 2020 for the implementation of target solutions. Management's response regarding recommendation number 2, management agrees and the recommendation has already been addressed. Again, Scott Rust, purchasing manager, responded, and the date of expected implementation is that it's already completed. Regarding recommendation number 3, management's response, management agrees, and a new policy has been inserted into the Purchase Card Program Guide as follows. To request a higher limit, daily and monthly limit, users shall have their supervisor email the program administrator requesting a higher limit. The request shall include the following information: 1, the amount of the increase, daily or monthly; and 2, justification for the increase. Upon receipt of the email and review of the justification, the program administrator will raise the daily or monthly limit to the justification warrants the increase. Again, Scott Rust, purchasing manager, responded, and this has already been implemented. Scott Rust, purchasing manager, and Cody Papke, Chief Accountant, are with us today in the audience, and we would welcome any questions that you have regarding this audit.
Okay. Thank you, Abby. Any questions from the committee? Dean?
Looks like there's 264 cards out there. Any thoughts about, is that too many? I mean, could that be cut down? P-cards typically are, you know, a problem area, and so most organizations try to keep that number as low as possible. 264 strikes me as a big number.
I will have Scott can...
Dean, I'll go ahead and address that issue, and, you know, it's always something that I keep an eye on, and I look at, and we look at the number of transactions a lot of these cardholders have. And, you know, you go into an organization like Parks and Recreation, they're spread out all the way across the city. In an effort to make sure that their business is efficient, they need those cards out there. Every one of those people need those cards. If I were to just funnel it down to, say, a handful of people, now I got people running all over town, and they're waiting for things to get done. And so, it's really, it's a touchy subject with a lot of them, because they feel it's an efficiency for them. And so, it is talked about, it is addressed, they are getting utilized. So, as long as the utilization's there, we'll go ahead and continue to have them keep that card, rather than trying to turn them into another purchasing person like my team, you know, rather than having them do all of that buying, that type of thing. But I get where you're coming from. It's a good question. There's a lot of managers out there that do that, and I'll tell you, a lot of the directors, I don't know if they really want to have, hey, just one person in the office that has a card. You know, the central purchasing office takes, you know, a lot of the big purchases, you know, off their plate, you know, but a lot of the small stuff, they want to have the convenience of, hey, I need to go get this for my department, or that for my department, and I have that flexibility to do so. And as long as utilization's there, we'll go ahead and let them keep the card. If the utilization's not there, though, we're getting rid of the card. And we do review that on an annual basis, and we take a look at it, say, hey, you've only made three transactions this year. Do you really need a card? And so, we try and mitigate that risk as much as possible.
Okay. Well, yeah, I just bring it up because I think controls are typically better to go through the normal purchasing process. And I understand that P-cards are necessary in some cases, but 264. I just encourage you to keep monitoring that. The other question I'd have is, do we know, has there been any issues with those in the past, where they've been misused?
There, I will tell you, there has been two people that have misused those cards in the past. Actually, one was an actual misuse, one was an actual misuse of the policy. And again, those were handled, those were personnel matters that were handled with the HR department.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. You know, I would have to agree with Dean when I look at the number of cards in some of the departments. And what do we have, approximately 1,200 employees?
Roughly.
That's about, 22% of them have P-cards. First of all, to our internal auditors, great job with the audit highlights. I like that page. That's nice. I mean, I can see us eventually having our own program on CityLink, like the NFL has their highlight reel. We could have our audit highlights for the month. But seriously, very, very nice. I like that. So, to understand that, the maximum on each card monthly is $2,500?
No, no, that's not correct. No, the purchase limit for most users is $1,000, and then the super-users get $2,500. Then, the purchasing team, again, we respond to emergencies, we respond to buying equipment and that sort of thing, so our card limits go quite a bit higher than that. And so, we're able to, the purchasing team can put, if we want to go out and buy a skid steer loader on a P-card, we definitely could, and they would accept it. So, if they accept it, that is. So, but most of the super-users, we have a handful of them out there, $2,500 max is what they get to purchase. Now, that policy was just changed here recently, and now they're able to go to $3,000. But most of the other users are at $1,000 max limit.
And another follow-up question. I know that I have a couple of cards that I get a percent back every month on my purchases. I'm hoping that we have that, too, with over 5.6 million.
Yeah, so if you go back to the report, this is kind of a good news story that I like to talk about. And when we transitioned over to Munis, we also transitioned over to a new credit card. At that time, we were with Harris Bank, and then we went to JP Morgan. And you'll see here that the rebates, when I negotiated that contract with them, I signed on to a consortium-type contract through, with another state, and all of our purchases were lumped into an overall spend, and we were able to reap the benefits of those reward points, basically, if you want to say it that way. But we were getting basically nothing for our credit card purchases, $0. So, we've gone from $0 to $360,000 that have gone back into the general fund.
That is correct.
Yeah, it is a good news story. We're going to continue to, we look at what we're spending on the credit card, and it's something we try to spend more on the credit card, you know. So, us as a purchasing team, in the central purchasing office, in finance, we look at things that we can spend, that we can put on the credit card to gain points to put, because that's money that goes back into the general fund. And so, you know, since we have that larger limit on our card, we're able to do that, and then hopefully raise that limit up and keep getting more dollars back.
And one last thing. Good job with the recommendations, especially recommendation number 2. So, thank you. Other questions? Tony?
More of a question for internal audit, but a couple of these items, or one of these items, was not yet completed or fully completed until 2020. Did you follow up on that? And then the ones that were completed, do you go back and test that those have really truly been completed?
We do. As a part of our annual audit plan, or moving forward, we will be following up, and then presenting those at a future Audit Committee meeting. But yes, we plan on following up on recommendations within six months to follow up and keep tabs on that.
And currently, the P-card is on one of those follow-up items for the 2020, and we are talking about doing continuous audits, because Dean, you brought up the fact that there are so many and where the risk is. So, this will be one of the areas we look at doing quarterly, or, you know, a couple of times a year, moving forward.
Yeah, and I have to agree with that. I asked for this audit. It had been a long time since this audit had been done. I think Rich Oxl was the last person who did this audit, and it hadn't been looked at since we moved from Harris Bank to JP Morgan. So, kudos for these guys. They did a great job. They identified some areas that, you know, we weren't aware of. We thought we took care of some of these issues. And again, with the detail in the audit, they came through, and they found some things that we needed to clean up, so it was good.
Great. Other questions? I do have a handful, and I also want to call out the highlights page. This is a nice executive summary, especially, there's going to be some people who are just not going to want to read a multi-page report, so to just have it just get, and I'm looking at one of them, to get right to the, right to the point. And I think this is going to be a part of every audit going forward, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, wonderful. So, I guess, the questions I had is, super-user, what is a super-user, and what determines whether I get to be a super-user?
Well, our super-users are people out there who are buying inventory, and water, water reclamation, fleet management. So, those are parts that are being used on those mechanical systems and that equipment that's being used in the city every day. A lot of that equipment requires a lot of PM-type work, preventive maintenance. So, we have an inventory there, and we have to replenish that inventory. So, again, they're buying those items on a day-to-day basis. It just wouldn't work to have that in the central procurement office, because it is a need that is needed relatively quickly in the event that there is a breakdown, so there's a full inventory in those departments.
So, would an example be, like, for example, the parts manager at the fleet department, who's...
Yeah, so we have parts, what we call them, parts workers, in those four departments, and those parts workers are buying parts for repairing snowplows, and dozers, and backhoes, and cars and trucks, versus out at the water plant, we're repairing pumps, electric motors, things of that nature, in those facilities.
Is there, and this could be for either one, is there a right-line test, or something that determines whether you use a P-card versus you do, like, an ACH draw? You know, like, if there's a, if somebody would let you pay a yearly contract with a card, would you do it, versus an ACH?
You know, we would definitely take a look at it. We've been trying to increase the spend on the card, because we get the money back. You know, there's a cost to an ACH, and there's an invoice that has to go up to finance, there's a PO that needs to be created, or a contract, you know, there's a lot of hands that have to touch that type of thing. So, again, we look at the P-card because it is a much more efficient way to pay things. So, I mean, we try to do that if possible.
And then, what explains finance being so large? Is that because there's some very large purchases that you're doing in the purchasing department?
Right, right. You know, so, again, we purchase a lot of different stuff at all different dollar thresholds, and, again, we purchase off cooperative contracts, and a lot of those cooperative contracts allow us to use credit cards, so we'll obviously increase the spend on our card. If they'll take a credit card for, you know, $30,000 bobcat, skid steer, we'll go ahead and give them the card number, and they'll charge it.
And who are the, how many allocators are there, and are they all located in finance?
They're not all located in finance. Again, some of those are additional duties for some people, so we have one in fire, we have one in police, and we have a few in public works. Again, so they reallocate, and there are some located in finance, too. But there are people that are in those departments that do a lot of those reallocations for those departments. So, they know exactly what they're spending their money on, too, so.
And so, in allocator, they're taking the, they're taking the purchasing card transaction that came in in a receipt, and then they're matching it to, like, what, like, equipment in city council, they're putting in an account number, so it's...
Right. So, then, what they're doing is they're matching up that purchase that was made by that cardholder, and making sure it gets put into the right general ledger account. And they're obviously looking at that, and then they also look at to make sure that it follows that policy. Again, if it's under $1,000, quotes aren't needed. So, again, there's really nothing to follow there, other than to make sure that the purchase that they made is, A, a legitimate purchase. I mean, obviously, if you're buying, you know, big-screen TVs left and right, we would know about that. You know, that's kind of an unusual-type purchase, they would see that. But if it's, you know, things for the police departments, say, example, training supplies that they need for the officers, then they'd say, oh, yeah, it's a legitimate purchase, that goes in this GL account, and that sort of thing, so.
Do these type of cards have restrictions in terms of, there's certain codes that go with every type, like, for example, amusement parks, that it will not let you charge those?
Absolutely. We set up the MCC codes, that's what they're called, on all the cards. It's, so when we actually order a new card, that MCC code is already on it. We've established those already. They're in our Purchasing Card Program Guide. There's a list of what is an eligible purchase, what is an ineligible purchase, and so there are MCC codes that are attached to all that, so it doesn't allow people to buy such things as, you can buy alcohol with something like that. You couldn't, for example, IT department doesn't want us buying computers with the cards, so we restrict buying computers with the cards. That way, all of those purchases end up going through the IT department, so we standardize those purchases.
Interesting. Okay. I think that's, does anybody else have any other questions? Looks like Dean may?
I got one. I was wondering, what's the review and approval process on these?
So, again, once the purchase is made, the purchase is put on what they call a P-card packet, and the receipt is put in that packet. That packet is then sent to the realicator. The realicator reallocate that. Upon that reallocation, in the system, the Munis Financial Management Software System, it, again, notifies the supervisor, and the supervisor has to approve that purchase. Now, granted, that purchase has already happened, but again, that supervisor has the visibility to see all purchases that are being made by that cardholder.
And do they document their approval?
They have to. It's electronic. Yeah, so there's an electronic record for that, so.
Is it all, is it all transactions, or all transactions over a certain dollar amount?
I think it's all transactions, yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there a receipt required, no matter what the threshold, or is it over a certain number?
Yes, yeah, there's a receipt required for everything. Itemized receipt showing it was actually paid with a credit card. So, it eliminates the possibility of something getting double-paid. So, if a contractor were to send an invoice, or what have you, that invoice, again, we would see that it's been paid already with a credit card, so it doesn't happen.
Okay. And these are the P-cards, which is a purchasing card, and then we have the travel cards? What, I mean, it sounds obvious, but what's the delineation, and why is there two different types?
Well, it's like a T-N-E card, so it's, again, that card is used for booking airlines, hotels, making those types of reservations for travel. This is just one card, so you don't have to delineate between, oh, that's for travel, that's for a purchase, that type of thing. It's, we try to keep the two cards separate for ease of organizing all of the information and getting it in the system, and making sure it's tracked accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Scott.
You bet. Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the report and submit it to the mayor and city council.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Dean, and was it seconded by Kylie?
Kylie.
Okay. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? Passes unanimously. The audit is accepted. Thank you to the finance team for coming to answer questions. Next item on the agenda, Item 3B, a 2019 Audit Plan Status Update, and I believe Shawna is going to walk us through the update to the audit plan.
That's correct. So, the approval of the 2019 Audit Plan, I wanted to go through each one of the audits that are planned for this year, and kind of give you a status of where each one of them are. The first audit, the payroll employee deductions, that audit is to begin the first week of October, and should be completed by year-end. The process audits, number 2, the landfill licensing, that one is about 99% complete. The audit is complete. We were hoping to present that to you at this meeting. However, with the turn of the weather events, management response has been delayed a little bit, so we've kindly given them more time, so we should be able to present that in our December meeting. The damage recovery billing process, that one will probably more than likely be a carryover from 19 to 20 based on timing. I do believe it could potentially get started in 2019, but I don't believe it will be finished for any of the presentations for 2019. The audit of agreements for management services, both 4 and 5 for the SMG agreement, as well as the Ovation's food service, those will also be started in October, and should also be finished by year-end of 2019. And, of course, the carryover audits from 2018, the purchasing card program we just presented to you now.
Okay. Any questions regarding the 2019 Audit Plan Update? And Shawna, just to clarify, the only one that looks like it may carry over to the next year would be the...
The damage recovery billing process, the number 3, for the public works.
Okay, which may increase in scope, but the rest is targeted to hopefully get finished this year?
That's correct.
Okay, which is, which is great, being, having been short-staffed, so to get that much done will be awesome. So, this item was just informational, there's no action required, and that is the case with the rest as well. So, we move on to Item 4, which is administration. The first one is the audit survey, and once again, Shawna will present.
I just wanted to give a little bit of feedback that we received from the audit survey that was sent out to the city council, the Audit Committee members, as well as key leadership of the administration. And the survey really targeted audit reports, as well as audit presentations, feedback on how to find audits. Are they available to you? Are you able to see them? How useful are the reports? How often do you refer back to them? Do you like the length, the engagement of the presentation? And based on the feedback, obviously, you've seen that we've already made one change with the P-card program audit. We have included a highlights page or an executive summary. Also, things that are going to be changing are the actual reports itself. The highlights will be included as the first page of the report, as well as just a remodel, a remake of the entire report. More appeasing, the cover will be different, and moving forward for that. Other feedback was the presentation to have, again, a PowerPoint and/or a one-page or two ultimately summarize what the entire report had in it. So, just updating that, as well as the website. We're working with communications and IT right now to update the website, get the audit reports out there, so that they're easier to find, as well as any of our information moving forward.
Very good. Questions or comments on that item? Seeing none, we will move on to Item B, Management Contract Methodology. Once again, Shawna?
I really wanted to have an open discussion on the methodology they've had in the past on the management contracts. I would like to talk to you guys about a more strategic approach of these audits for control audits and recovery audits, versus just a blanket, every three years, let's do this audit. I'd really like to work with the purchasing team annually to identify when the audit, or when the contracts are up for renewal. That way, if there is a control audit or recovery audit, we can look at to say, are they in compliance? Are there any changes that... Are there any changes that need to be made before we actually renew the contract as it is? Now, it might be that it is every three years, depending on how the contracts are written, whether they're five years with five-year extensions. I mean, it could look every three years. However, I'd really like to just take a step back and look at it more strategically to see if it makes sense. There's no sense of wasting time essentially in doing a contract audit that is going to expire and we have no plans to renew. Or a contract that was renewed and we already audited a year or two years ago. So I'd really appreciate any feedback on that.
Questions, comments, input on that suggestion? I would just throw out, it may, it may help as, for historical purposes, I think it might have been two or three years ago, under the previous audit committee and the previous audit chair, there was a concern raised about how often are we doing management contract audits? And that would be basically all of the facilities that we have third parties managing, like the event center. And there was some concern that many years were going by without some of these contracts being audited. And some of them were moving, you know, millions and millions of dollars a year and managing bank accounts on behalf of the city. And there was nothing formally adopted, but what they had decided at one of those meetings was let's get on about a three-year cycle so that we're looking at each contract about every three years. And it wasn't, I don't think, there was really no magic behind it. But just have a cadence so that they wouldn't, you wouldn't, next thing you know, you have 10 years go by and we haven't looked at a contract. And I think we have had some times where we've literally had a contract expire, and then we renewed a contract with a firm. And then we did an audit of the previous contract, which had expired the last year of that contract, but we'd already renewed with them for another five to 10 years. And it would seem like, rather than just simply just saying we're going to do it every three years, maybe it would make more sense to say, okay, this contract is going to be up for renewal in a year. Maybe we ought to do, maybe now is the time to do an audit of it, to take a look at it, see how it's been performing so that when they go to do, think about whether they're going to exercise renewal. Many times, a city has the ability to, has the option, but not the requirement to renew, that they could look at it and take a look. So I think you'd still have a reasonable cadence, but the idea is to try to make it a little more strategic in the timing. So if that helps. So it seems to make sense. But any comments or input? Otherwise, I think we'll assume silence is agreement. Yeah, it seemed to be. Looks like that has been approved unofficially. So we will move on to the next item, which is 4C, which is consulting audits. And Shawna is going to present that discussion as well.
I put this item on the agenda to really talk about, over the past years, what I've noticed is internal audit has done a lot of assurance audits, where we give them recommendations and then we essentially just kind of walk away. Right now, Abby is pretty much finishing the landfill licensing audit and has in turn now acted in more of a consulting role. Where she's given insight, she is providing best practices, what other cities and entities are doing, to find efficiencies, not only just for the city, as well as for the public as well, when they go and apply for the audit, or excuse me, apply for the license. And so I just really wanted to encourage and see what you guys thought about as we go and gear up for the 2020 cycle. Just encourage any other consulting audits moving forward, not just assurance audits. I believe Abby would have any feedback, you guys would have as well, on what she's doing and any insights she may have and be able to give on those right now.
Questions or comments? Dean?
I think that makes a lot of sense. I'd like to hear a little bit more about what it is that you're doing. I mean, I think it makes the concept of being proactive and talking with departments, especially those where there's a lot of risk, and helping them, consulting with them to set up better controls or to improve what they have. But I'd like to hear a little more.
Absolutely. Without going into too much detail, since the audit is not finalized and we have not presented it yet, I won't go into specific detail because of the nature of that. But in our role as auditors, looking at best practices, and in this case, looking at what other cities have done, and acting in a consulting role to help them, help, help guide them into what would lead to more efficiencies in our current process. And not just dropping the ball on them and leaving them high and dry, so to speak. But like more consulting with them and showing them evidence or other best practices that I've seen in doing research prior to the audit, in the planning phase, as well as things that I had found during our, during the engagement or during the testing fieldwork phase that could improve the process, and helping them along that path.
Other questions, comments? So to expand that a little more, would that look like something that it would come on the heels of an audit? Or could it be both? Like, it could be just organic, where a department just might say, we'd like to know how to do this better?
It could be both, yes. For example, the software implementation, as they were going through the processes, looking where key controls should be, they'd be able to say, hey, I know that we're having an upgrade. I know that our accounts payable process is changing within the system. Where do you think the best controls should be? Or are these the best controls to mitigate the risk? Versus, hey, we're doing an audit, I know that you guys just updated your software. Now let's see what you're not doing right.
So the proactive ones would be something that, that might come out of a survey from the departments and development of the audit plan, I take it?
That's correct.
And get scheduled? Now, the consulting ones, that would be, would that happen in the same year and just be scheduled and done as time would allow? Or, if that makes sense? Because you have the audit plan for a year, and then how does, you know?
I think it would fall in within the audit plan. But I do believe that some of the audits that are being done, especially process audits, I do believe the administration would love for more feedback on the consulting side, especially after going through, where are the efficiencies, what can we do better? Now, can you, can you help us and show us what, where you saw the best practices in other cities and/or processes? So it could potentially be both.
So from a non-auditor perspective, this is something where you may give recommendations right now, and you give, and that's kind of the end of it? Whereas a consultant could be more of, all right, here's some ways in which you can implement those recommendations, or here's the 20 cities that I looked at, and here's some great, exactly how they did it to help them put those recommendations into place? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? We will move on to item 4D, the audit engagement process. Shawna?
This is just an informational item on here as well. I'm working on developing new processes and procedures within the internal audit department, especially training and continuing training auditors as they come in. And one of those that I looked at was the engagement process of the entire audit, how to refine that as, as the auditors go through an audit from engagement, the implementation part of determining the scope, meeting with the internal audit team to really develop their risk assessments and the scope of it. Then, within the fieldwork, going from that to the fieldwork, documenting when that is and how often the touchpoints are into the reporting and the audit closure process of the engagement. Just kind of tracking where they're at, where the audit is, any feedback from the other auditors, as well as lessons learned. So this was just basically informative to let you know that we're looking at revamping the engagement process for audits, from the planning to the fieldwork, as well as reporting and the closure. This also will include a post-audit satisfaction survey, which has already been developed and will be utilized within the landfill licensing process. That will give us feedback, as well as potentially you guys on the audit committee, to know what, how the engagement process went with each of the audits. And that will be sent out to the key players on the audit, not just higher staff, but anybody who was on there.
Okay. Questions, comments on that item?
So am I understanding that you're just going to formalize the process a little more, make it a little more detailed so they have a clear expectation? And then, you know, you've got a little, a few more things that you're going to do systematically?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Any other comments? Seeing none? The next item is item 4E, the fraud control policy and the fraud hotline.
So a little bit on the fraud control policy. I don't know if you guys know that it was put in resolution in 2012 and has not been updated or looked at that I'm aware of since then. So right now, looking at it, updating it, I do feel like it's out of date. Working with administration as well, so that they know that there is a fraud control policy out there, as well as the fraud hotline. That's one of the key items that we're trying to do a launch so that it's more, it's out there more, you know, so that the employees know that it's out there and that it can be utilized. So between those two things, the fraud control policy and the fraud hotline, we're hoping to, one, come up back with a new resolution with an updated policy, as well as a hard launch of the fraud hotline.
Questions or comments? Dean?
So the fraud hotline wasn't in existence before? I thought it was.
It is in existence.
People don't know about it?
They know about it, but it's not, it's supposed to be, to meet, for example, I'd like to put into place new employees, new employee orientation. Here's what the fraud hotline is, this is what it can do for you. Here's a number, as well as a website, and then direct them to the internet where we're going to hopefully have a button on there that says where it's at and how to report it. I don't really know if a lot of the employees know a lot about it or how to report it and what it's there for. So with the redevelopment of our website pages, hoping to put what fraud, waste, and abuse is and what that hotline is used for.
Well, I'd certainly encourage any communication to make people aware. Has there, what kind of numbers do we get on calls on that?
Yeah, to date for 2019, there has been nothing.
Yeah, so that, that kind of tells you that people just aren't, it's not on top of mind. But, so, I think that's a good idea.
Other comments? And just to expand on that, that's something that, when I was handling some things in the interim, that really concerned me. And we had the fraud hotline, our current provider, it just so happened that the, our contract was coming up for renewal, as you may recall. And we were spending a lot of money and getting zero calls, one call. We had one year where there might have been half a dozen or eight or something years ago. And that was when there was, essentially, they kind of took a push to try to advertise it, and then there's a little bit of a spike of calls, and then it just kind of fell down. And it's been zero, one, two, something like that for a handful of years. So the concern was, if we're paying for it, then we need to figure out how to get it engaged. It's on the website, the internal website, but it's kind of buried. There's things in the fraud control policy where it talks about, they're supposed to be prominent, supposed to be prominently on our website, on the internal city website, and it's not. And then things that we discussed were, what are some places where we could get good touchpoints? I mean, you know, new employee orientation. And then they also, when you do your yearly review, you get to go through certain policies. That might be a perfect time to say, hey, here's, you know, remember, here's the hotline, and, you know, different classes, and getting some other email reminders out there. Just places where you can just get it more prominent so we can get some more engagement, so. And that fraud control policy was, as I recall, was it 2012? Yeah, so I think there was a, as I recall, I think Rich did a fraud risk assessment in 2011 or 2012. And one of the things that came out of it was that best practice was to have a fraud hotline and have a fraud control policy. So the city council adopted a policy. And so there's actually a policy, and it goes into things like, we will have a fraud hotline, we'll do this, this, and this. And if there's allegations of fraud, these departments will come together, they'll look at it. This is what they'll do. But some of that stuff is really kind of out of date. And it may, I'm not even sure that everybody's even necessarily aware that it exists. So it's a good time to review it, and I think they're going to bring some changes forward, which we would look at, and then forward to the city council, because the city council would have to ultimately adopt any resolution. So there'd be amendments to it. It's, is it 10 pages, something like that?
I don't think it's that.
Okay, handful of pages. So, I mean, it's got enough detail. So good time to review that. And as far as the fraud hotline goes, on the internal website, the new phone number is there. So that's been, I will call it, we did a soft launch, as it were. So it's there if people look for it, but we wanted to do what she called a hard launch, where there would be kind of a coordinated, you know, there'd be an email blast, and a new button would go on a website, and a whole ta-da, you know, to kind of relaunch it and kind of bring awareness back to it, so. There's no other comments on that. We will move on to item five, open discussion. So if anybody has a comment or a question, it looks like Counselor Sale has something for us.
Yes, I'd just like to say that in the year and a half that I've been on the audit committee, it's been an interesting year and a half. We've gone through some hiring, which is sometimes controversial. So I'd like to point out that Counselor Nicer has done a great job to bring this committee to the plate. There's nobody here from the public to be concerned about what's going on. The audit report that was put in front of us today is super. It's done in a very professional manner. It's a way that even I can understand that. And now that we have the right people in the right seats going forward, I appreciate the leadership that you've shown and the work that's being done. And I think the committee is probably, it's off to a roaring start, and I look forward to your work in the future.
Thank you for that. And I will also mention that we have two incredible self-starters. These are people that, they take a lot of pride in their work, they work really hard. And as an audit manager, or audit chair, excuse me, I don't have to worry that, that they're getting their work done. They hold themselves accountable and they go 100 miles an hour. Counselor Kylie?
Yes, I'd just like to echo that a little bit. This, I've been on this committee for nearly six years now, and this has been one of the more productive meetings, thanks to our staff that we've had in the last several years. So, good job. Thank you.
Other comments? And I would also point out, we'll have more to come, but there's some good, good work that's going on in terms of working on fast-tracking certifications and things like that. So one of the things that you can measure your staff by in your division is, are they getting continuing credit hours? Are they working on certifications like CIA and things like that? And those are in progress, so. If there is nothing else, the next item is public comments. It's time for anybody that would like to talk about anything that we've talked about today. You have five minutes. Seeing none? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.